I'd like to call the November 4th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. The first order of business would be the invocation by Deputy Interim County Manager, Ms. Sharon Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please bless all those who have gathered here this evening. Lord, be with the Commissioners tonight. Grant them knowledge and guidance as they look upon the responsibilities that are before them. Tonight, as we recognize the Onslow County Council of Veteran Organizations, we ask that you bless them abundantly for the hardships they faced, for the sacrifices they made, and for their many contributions to our community and nation. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. As we go through the week ahead, help us to serve others with a pure heart and a kind spirit. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, hear us in a moment of silence.
Our Pledge of Allegiance now by Rolling Thunder, North Carolina, Chapter 5.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'd like to acknowledge elected officials tonight would be Sheriff Hans Miller. Thank you, sir, for being here. We ask that all in attendance please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue oriented with the agenda item for this meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will acknowledge, will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, Commissioners shall preserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner's comment period on the agenda which is at the end of the meeting. With no other items being considered separately, a motion is in order to adopt the meeting agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does any Commissioner have anything on their item two consent agenda be moved to the end of the meeting for more discussion? Hearing none. I need a, ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Motion in a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Three, public comment. Interim County Manager Sharon Russell, do we have anybody signed up to speak on the first section of public comment?
Mr. Chairman, we have no one signed up.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four presentations and I'll turn that over to you, Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight, we have two proclamations. The first is about our Adoption Awareness Month 2019. Onslow County recognizes the unique value and potential in each child and understands that children need the safety and security of a permanent home to reach their full potential. We're going to have the Representatives from the Department of Social Services come up in a moment to receive this proclamation that I will now read into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, National Adoption Month 2019. Whereas during National Adoption Awareness Month, we recognize the adoptive and foster families who have shared their homes and hearts with children in need, and we encourage more citizens to consider adopting children of all ages. And whereas, the 2019 national theme for Adoption Month is Youth Voices: Why Family Matters. Onslow County families are encouraged to share their hearts and homes with children waiting to be adopted. And whereas, every child deserves the opportunity to grow up in a loving and stable family, and adoption is one way to build a family. And whereas, caring adults who foster or adopt children can make all the difference in the lives of young people, sibling groups, children with special needs, children of different ethnicities, and teenagers. And whereas, Onslow County Department of Social Services has worked diligently to place foster children in adoptive homes and currently has 186 children in foster care and 22 children achieved permanence through adoption in 2018. And whereas, the Onslow County Department of Social Services would like to celebrate foster and adoptive families and to spread awareness on behalf of the children in foster care who await a loving and permanent home. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners do hereby acknowledge November 2019 as the National Adoption Month and calls upon all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities to honor adoptive families and to participate in efforts to find permanent homes for waiting children, presented on the fourth day of November 2019 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. And at this time, I believe, Mr. Chairman, you requested that Commissioner William Shanahan present the proclamation, and Representatives from the Department of Social Services will come forward.
I'm happy to be presenting this proclamation. You know, as a legal act, adoption is really something incredible. I mean, what the Court essentially does is say that any family bonds that existed prior to adoption no longer exist and never did exist, and that the bond that's being created in that moment now exists and always have. And so, it's a pretty incredible step that the Court can take, and it's an incredible thing for families to do. As a parent choosing to adopt is basically saying to a child that, you know, "I am yours, you are mine, and my life is for you now." And that's, that's an incredible thing to do. And so, it's right that we honor people who make that, take that step and make that sacrifice for these kids who often are really in need of loving homes. So, thank you, guys.
I just want to thank the Commissioners for recognizing November as Adoption Awareness Month, and I brought with me Kimberly Winston, who is our Permancy Planning Program Manager at the Department of Social Services, and Dishalo Pierre, who is our Adoption Supervisor.
Good evening, and once again, thank you so very much. Unadoptable is an unacceptable term for our children and families, so we don't use that term, unadoptable, because we believe every child deserves permanence and every child deserves a forever family. So, I want to thank our foster families and adoptive families that open up their hearts and homes for our children, and I want to thank my Adoption Unit who works so very hard to ensure that our children receive permanence. Thank you again.
Mr. Chairman, the second proclamation is actually going to be presented to a large number of organizations, several organizations that are being recognized, and this is in recognition of Veterans Recognition Month. I would like to read out these organizations that are going to be recognized first, and then I will read the proclamation. The American Legion Burton Cowl Post 265 Jacksonville, American Legion Post 265 AUX Jacksonville, Clarence Meadows, American Legion Post 78 Swansboro, AmVets Post 225, Captain John C. Carr, Veteran Resource Center, DAV-16 Onslow County, DAV-16 Auxiliary, Fleet Reserve Association Branch 208, Marine Corps League Jacksonville 262, Marine Corps League Auxiliary Jacksonville 262, Marine Corps League Swansboro Detachment 1407, Military Order of the Purple Heart Beirut Chapter 642, NAVVETS Chapter 0054, NAVVETS 88 Women's Chapter, Non-Commissioned Officers' Association 906, Retired Affairs Office, Rolling Thunder NC-5, Veterans of Foreign Wars 9133 Jacksonville, Veterans of Foreign Wars 9960 Swansboro, Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9983 Holly Ridge, North Carolina, Vietnam Veterans of America John Panerace Chapter 654, Women Marines Association NC-1 Tar Heel Chapter, and Veterans Service Office Onslow State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, Veterans Recognition Month 2019. Whereas on Veterans Day, America pauses to honor every service member who has ever worn one of our nation's uniforms. Each time our country has come under attack, they have risen in her defense. Each time our freedoms have come under assault, they have responded with resolve. And whereas, as we pay tribute to our veterans, we are mindful that no ceremony or parade can fully repay that debt. We remember that our obligations endure long after the battle ends, and we make it our mission to give them the respect and care they have earned. And whereas, under the most demanding of circumstances and in the most dangerous corners of the earth, America's veterans have served with distinction. And whereas, on Veterans Day and every day, we celebrate their immeasurable contributions, draw inspiration from their example, and renew our commitment to showing them the fullest support of a grateful nation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares November as Veterans Recognition Month in Onslow County and encourages all citizens to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through appropriate public or private ceremonies and gestures, presented this fourth day of November 2019 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. And at this time, we would ask... Yes, I believe the Chairman has requested that Commissioner Knapp will present this, and we're going to have Joe Dewane of the Veteran Services in Onslow County to come forward and to, and also a representative from the Onslow County Council of Veteran Organizations to accept the proclamation. This proclamation is also being presented by Commissioner Buchanan.
When I was asked which proclamation I wanted to do, I wanted to do this one because a veteran myself, and I've called Commissioner Buchanan up too, he's a veteran as well. It means a lot. It means a lot to this community, it means a lot to me. I recently came back from my father-in-law's funeral, and he was in the Army, and it's been many, many years since he was in the Army, but the Veteran Auxiliary was there with the Army Color Guard, and it was, it was beautiful and it brought tears to my eyes. And so, I just want to say thank you to these guys that are behind me, to all those that have served. I've ridden with these guys, and we've told some stories. You know, it's something when you, when you join the military, doesn't matter what branch you join, you're wearing a uniform. You're basically signing a check to the, to the public saying, "At any time, you can cash this check with my life." And I firmly believe that. That's why I went in the military. The military is a part of my heritage. My father is retired military. My grandfather was in the military, and his father before him was in the military as well. And to me, it's an honor, and we should be declaring this every month of the year for the veterans because they've done so much. And I know some of the personal stories of some of these people back here, and they've been through a lot, a lot more than what I've been through, and it is totally a big honor for me. I am humbled by your presence. We have a strong veterans organization here, many organizations within Onslow County, and you should be proud of that. And I mean what I say. When you see a veteran, thank them. Thank a veteran, no matter what branch of service they were in, because they made sure that you have the freedom that you have today for the many sacrifices that they've, they've undergone throughout their career. So, on behalf of me personally, thank you very much for your service, and I'm sure Paul Buchanan is going to say something. He's a Vietnam veteran, as my father was, and it's a proud moment for me, and I just can't be more grateful for everything that you all do and continue to do for the community because these people are the, are the lifeline of our community, and they're still giving after many years of hanging up the uniform. So, thank you very, very much from the bottom of my heart, and God bless all of you.
Did you want to say something? When you say Paul around here, everybody's...
I want to thank all of you. I've been around all of you, all the time I've been a Commissioner for the last 15 years, Grant, and a lot of you here, the Walkers and the Vietnam Memorial. I mean, it's one of my favorite places to go, and you always ask me to come every year to do the proclamation, and it just means so much to me and all of what you've done for this community. Grant, I've been around Grant a long time, and I like to play golf against him, but I never get a chance to. But, thank everybody for being here for this. It's just, it's an important day for us, and like Robin said, we should celebrate it every month because of what you all do for this community. I want to thank you. Paul?
Okay. That's, that's a, that's a running joke around the OCCOVO too because we have so many Pauls that when you, when you holler "Paul," about four or five of them turn around, so it's just automatic for me. But, as President of the Onslow County Council of Veteran Organizations, this is a proud moment for all of us, and I'm happy to accept this proclamation on behalf of these great Veteran Service Organizations here on Onslow County that work hard for veterans every day throughout the year and, and really make a difference in Onslow County when it comes to helping veterans. And there's a lot of stuff that you don't know about that goes on behind the scenes in helping some of the veterans in Onslow County that you wouldn't realize how, how much work goes into what they do. So, it's just a great thing. And thanks to the County Commissioners for recognizing us once again for, for what they do. I just run the, the meetings, but these, these people behind us, behind us, they, they bust their hump every day for veterans, and that's what it's all about. And appropriately, we've got Veterans Day coming up here in a week from today, so no better time to recognize our veterans, and we sure appreciate it. I'd rather Robin, too.
One other thing I want to mention, too. Come out and support the veterans this Saturday. We have a big Veterans Day Parade in Jacksonville. You'll see, you'll see the Rolling Thunder, you'll see the Blue Knights, you'll see a bunch of people that'll participate in this, and it's really important that the community gets, stands up together and just get out there and show your appreciation to all the veterans and wave to them. That means a lot. The parade means a lot to these people, and I know it means a lot to myself, Paul, and the other veterans in this community. So, don't forget, Saturday, be there 9 o'clock for the parade. Congratulations, Paul.
I think that's Assistant County Manager Sherri Slater.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman and Commissioners. This evening, as your Acting Health Director as well, I will bring you the requested write-offs for approval, and this year for fiscal year 2019, the amount totaling $1,127.04 has remained an outstanding balance for over two years. This requested write-off amount is the amount that is, each individual debt is less than the $50 required to be on the debt set-off list, and it is the amount requested after we've applied insurance or sliding fee scale to the, to the debt. This equals .04% of our $2,975,951.07 in total receivables for the fiscal year 2019. And also in 2019, Onslow County Health Department recovered $49,004 in delinquent debts through the Debt Set-Off Clearinghouse. So, we do make every effort to collect those funds. We've also begun including the Personnel Policy Regarding Employee Debt to the County in those bills that are applicable. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item B, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Contract. I think that's Ms. Carrie Sanders.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. The item you have before you is the authorization to sign billing and reimbursement paperwork for the grant process that is required by the Division of Health and Human Services, Public Health, Public Health, Division of Public Health, I'm sorry, and it is required to be updated annually through our Board of County Commissioners serving as a Consolidated Human Services Board. So, I respectfully request that the Board authorize the Chairman to sign the associated documents on behalf of the Consolidated Human Services Board.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Carrie. Appointments, item number six. I'll turn that over to Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Our first set of appointments for tonight involves the Commissioner appointments to the Recreation Complex Study Group. If you'll recall, at the Joint City and County Meeting held September 30th, the two governing boards agreed to create a study group made up of city and county officials. The purpose is to study the feasibility of a recreation complex. More specifically, this group is going to study the need for such a complex. It's going to study the potential locations and how much land would be needed, the potential costs and recommended phasing. They will identify financial partners and identify potential revenue sources. At the regular meeting of the City Council held September 22nd, the Council appointed two members to the study group. They appointed Mayor Pro Tem Michael Lozaro and Councilman Bob Warden. At this time, we respectfully request that you appoint two Commissioners to serve on the Recreation Complex Study Group in conjunction with the City of Jacksonville.
Thank you. I want a motion to nominate two Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We nominate Paul Buchanan and Commissioner Tim Foster to represent the county.
Your second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for serving. This came about as the joint meeting, and that was, Mayor Pro Tem Lozaro had talked to Commissioner Buchanan and Tim Foster about serving, and they agreed to, so it was, they had decided. Maybe able to add some more people back and forth on that as we get down to the, you know, more details of what they want to do. By item B, Swansboro Board of Adjustment.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. North Carolina General Statute, Section 160A-362, provides that the County Board of Commissioners is the appointing authority for extraterritorial representatives on municipal planning boards of adjustment. The Swansboro Board of Commissioners respectfully recommend that Mr. Tom Carricker of its extraterritorial jurisdiction be considered for appointment to the Swansboro Board of Adjustment. The application has been certified and is on file with the Clerk's Office. At this time, we respectfully request that you consider appointing Mr. Tom Carricker as the extraterritorial jurisdiction alternate for a three-year term expiring August 30th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. See Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This final set of appointments is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. The North Carolina Department of Public Safety partners with juvenile crime prevention councils in each county of the state to galvanize community leaders to reduce and prevent juvenile crime. JCPC board members are appointed by the County Board of Commissioners, and they meet monthly. Each JCPC has the responsibility of reviewing the needs of juveniles in the county who are at risk of delinquency or have been adjudicated undisciplined or delinquent, and they prioritize community risk factors, determine the services needed, and come up with new initiatives to address those problem areas. Due to the recent retirement of Honorable Judge William Cameron III, there is a current vacancy for the District Court Judge category. Honorable Christopher J. Welch, District Court Judge, has expressed an interest in filling this vacancy. The application has been certified and is on file at the Clerk's Office. We respectfully ask that you consider appointing Honorable Christopher J. Welch in the District Court Judge category for a remaining two-year term which would expire on June 30th, 2020.
Your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'm assuming we'll notify them of the appointment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Consent agenda under item seven, we didn't move anything from the consent agenda for discussion, so we're at item number eight, which is back to public comment section. Anyone signed up?
No, Mr. Chairman, no one has signed up for the public comment.
Okay. Next item is manager's comment. Anything that you need to bring to the attention of the Board or the citizens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I simply want to say thank you again for the trust you've put in me in the past week, and I also would like to say thank you to our veterans and those who have served us, and we will be recognizing our employees who are veterans this week. We're very lucky to employ a lot of veterans, and they are very valued in our organization. I also wanted to let the Commissioners and the public know that our Nutrition Program Director and nutritionists are at a conference this week and will be receiving an award for Onslow County for efforts that they have taken in promoting the health of breastfeeding and making that accessible for women in our community, and we're very proud of the work that they've done. Thank you again.
Thank you, ma'am. We're at Commissioner's comments. I will ask Commissioner Buchanan.
Thank you. Thank DSS for what you do with our foster children. Children are our future. We have to look out for them. I know that sometimes there's some domestic violence that takes place, and these children are taken from the homes, and you have to find homes for them, and I want to thank you for doing that. It's a hard job.
It's a hard job, and I know we don't have enough foster parents. I keep being told that many, many times, so we need more foster parents to come forward to help. The veterans, what can I say there? They do a lot for this community. They've been very good to me over the years, and I want to thank the Chairman for allowing me to go to the Vietnam Memorial to do the proclamations every year. I've been doing that, I guess, I don't know, as long as I can remember now. I've been sitting here for 15 years, and Jerry's out there in the audience, and I know all of you have been good to me, and Paul, he's still here, and he helped me out a whole lot when it comes to our veterans, and it means a whole lot to me. And the other thing, I want to thank the Board for allowing me to sit on the Rec Center with Mike Lozar and Bob Warden and Foster going to be with us. That's been a passion of mine. A lot of you might have heard me talk about it quite a while back, that we need event complex, we actually need a sports event complex is what we need in this community, and I think between the city and the county, we can pull this off. It's going to take a lot of work from all the Commissioners and the City Council, but I think we can get it done, and it's one of my passions. I've been working on it in the background for quite a while, and then it kind of died off, and now I'm thankful to Mike Lozar for bringing it forward again. And actually, what brought it to forward was the meeting we had with the City Council, that meeting we had with them that day, and it worked a whole lot. And I want to thank you for being here tonight, and God bless.
Commissioner Foster?
A big thank you for those involved with adoption, not only the individuals that step up to adopt children, but also those that have taken that important step to realize that adoption is something that would be better for the child that they're about to have or have just had. So our adoptive parents, I just thank God for you and what you provide for children. And thank you, Board, for having that faith in us to represent us with the Rec Center or the Multi-Sports Complex or whatever it can grow and become. And then finally, I've been in Jacksonville, Onslow County all my life. Paul, you guys were out at Southwest High School a few years ago as we put the empty chair there in our stadium, POWs and MIAs to represent our folks from the Vietnam War era. And 1983, I was 14 years old, and I remember the news in the Beirut. You know, there's not a lot you, you just can't put in words what the veterans mean, not only to this nation, but in particular Onslow County. It is a tremendous honor to grow up in Onslow County with what the commitment of the men and women of our armed forces have done. And Ronald Reagan is one that just put it out there real quick and easy for us, and that is freedom is just one generation away from extinction. And we've got to remember that, and my hat's off to the men and women that serve and what you do. A grandfather-in-law that met General Patton back in World War II, to a father-in-law that served in the Marine Corps, and other family members, and the father of a gentleman currently deployed. Thank you, thank you for what you do for this country, and thank you for what you do in representing Onslow County.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Nap?
I want to reiterate what Paul said about the outdoor recreation complex. I think that is huge. It's something that we need here in Onslow County without a doubt as far as a revenue generator, but with all the sports that we have in this town, and this town is heavy into sports, whether it be basketball, soccer, football, you name it, baseball. And I fully support your endeavors, and I hope we can get something going and moving in the right direction. Talking about veterans, you know, when I was up there talking about the veterans, it really does mean a lot to me, because I served proudly in the United States Air Force. I miss those days. I kind of fell into my father's footsteps, so to speak, and you can't say thank you enough to the individuals that wear the uniform, the Marine Corps, Navy, Coast Guard, Air Force, and Army guys, and women. I mean, you guys put it on the line every day. I mean, I went through it. Many of them went through it for many more years, and some are continuing to go through it, and not a moment goes by that they don't second-guess their decision. You know, if something were to happen, they'd be the first ones to defend this country, and the veterans that are retired and the veterans that served would be the first ones with them as well. And I think that's very, very important, and I just want to thank you. And I did find out, and my respect factor's gone up for you, Ben, that you're a veteran. I never knew that. I was kidding. I've always respected you, but I didn't know that. I found out you in the Army? Good for you, man. Good for you. And so again, it means a lot, and just show the gratitude to the people out there, to the veterans, because they don't get much, and they do a lot of the things that they do from the bottom of their heart. I know Paul Lefkewe right there, he works diligently in the veteran community. He's a big name, and he's got a big voice, and we do listen to him, except when he starts rambling with his stories, but we do love you, Paul. But thank you. Don't forget the Veterans Day Parade this Saturday, please. Go out and show your support to all the veterans that have served and that are continuing to serve, and I think you'll appreciate the time. And the last thing, or two things, first I want to welcome Ms. Chrissy Hoover. We've got a chance to meet you today. I hope we didn't scare you away during our lunch. I thought it was pretty fun, but she will probably be our next director, Health Director here in Onslow County, and we welcome you aboard. We're looking forward to working with you, and it was a pleasure meeting you today. And last but not least, Sharon. I just want to say that you have my full confidence, and I know you have the whole Board's confidence in your new position as Interim County Manager, and I don't expect anything less. You're more than qualified for the position, and I think you're going to do a great job, and I just wanted to say thank you, and I commend you for accepting.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Nap.
Absolutely. And to the rest of you, have a good evening, drive home safely, and we'll see you next time.
Commissioner Price?
I'd also like to thank our veterans for their service to the nation and to our local community here in Onslow County. I attended the Beirut Memorial Observance, and the only word that just comes to mind is just impressive. I was honored to be there, it was a very impressive ceremony, and so that is important to remember what occurred there in Beirut. Also, congratulations to our YMCA for a grand opening. They have programs both for adults and kids alike, so check out the YMCA. And other than that, have a good evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Shanahan?
Thank you, guys, for coming out. It's been a busy two weeks since our last meeting. We also had a public safety memorial that we hosted honoring our fallen public safety officials and first responders. And so, you know, that was a great ceremony that we were able to host. You know, we have had a change in leadership since the last time we were here, but I'm fully confident, Ms. Russell, in what you'll be able to do, and I'm excited to see, moving forward, the direction that you'll be able to take this organization in. So thank you, guys, for being here.
Thank you. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sit here before we start, and I make a list of about seven things that I wanted to talk about, and then as everybody else talks about them, I mark them off. I come down to very few things to talk about. We appreciate you guys being here tonight. I also want to thank Ms. Russell for stepping up to the interim county manager job. And I was also honored to attend Marynatha Baptist Church Family, Friends and Family Day yesterday. Pastor McConaughey and Tanatha Doniff invited me, and we had a good time with them yesterday, so I wanted to thank them. And that's all I had to say. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, sir. I'll reiterate the support and sacrifices that our veterans make and have made. If you hadn't have made those sacrifices, we wouldn't enjoy the freedom we have today. So my hat's off to you, my heart's out to you. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for being here to accept the awards. The Municipal Elections Day is tomorrow, so the ones of you that are in the city limits of the town that's having elections, go out and vote. I think the voter turnout's been really low for early voting so far, but exercise your right, go out and vote, and that way we'll have the election will be over tomorrow night, and we'll know who some of the winners and losers are after tomorrow night. Congratulations, Ms. Russell, for your appointment as an interim county manager. You have done a really good job as Deputy County Manager, and I'm sure you'll be very good at doing what you're doing as interim county manager. Thank you for stepping up to the plate. And thank you to all the staff out here tonight that have come tonight and sat through these meetings and supported the Board and been here in case we needed to ask you anything. Thank you for being here. Officer Nap, have a good evening and drive safe.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Ask for it. All in favor. Looks like we adjourned. Thank you.